Called a meeting to order, I invite you to join with me in the invitation. Dear Lord, you have shown us to respect and love others in our actions and decisions. Let us follow your direction in leading our community. Help us to realize the impact of our decisions. Show us compassion for those less fortunate. Lord, we ask for your love and safety for our children and families this summer as they travel home, at home and in their travels. Protect our employees and keep them safe while doing difficult jobs. Lord, we trust you and ask your blessings for all that are here and us to thy service. Approval of the minutes, consider approval of the minutes for the five fourteen twenty-four special session, five sixteen twenty-four special session and closed session, five twenty twenty-four special session, regular session and closed session, and five twenty-seven twenty-four special session, special session and closed session.
Move approval.
Motion by council member Townsend.
He's working us too hard, man.
Second, second, second by council member Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is a public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider the budget and approval of ordinance twenty-four seventeen. This is a public hearing, anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Most of closed public hearing.
Motion by council member Townsend to close the public hearing.
Second.
Second by council member Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Further discussion council? I'll entertain a motion on ordinance twenty-four seventeen. Motion by council member Dry to approve ordinance twenty-four seventeen. Second by council member Whitley, further discussion?
Just a couple of questions. So within the, the attachment on this item, outside attachment number three on this, on the agenda item, it talks about the memorandum of changes for the budget hearing. And it's my understanding that it has, this has to be done because it is an addition to what was originally presented. And I'm glad it's there. When I looked at it, and I guess we don't really have to make a determination, or do we, about the amounts of money within the memo that will change the budget itself? Does that make any sense? Because the memo itself basically talks about five changes. And then there is backup documentation. But is this something that we need to have? I'm just asking. Is it something that we need to approve? And is it something that needs to be approved with the actual amounts on there? And I guess I don't know who needs to be asked that if it needs to be.
First, I think you should answer that for us. If there's a requirement, then Jake can back you up.
So just a point of clarification, is the budget that is being presented in the ordinance already incorporating these changes?
Yes.
So if the ordinance budget already proposed incorporates it, I don't see a need to do a separate approval here because you'll be approving it by.
Right.
Jake, are you good with that?
Yeah, that's correct. The only caveat would be on the lighting for the parks. That'll be brought back to you guys with the project budget when, when everything's ready.
Further discussion?
And the only other comment that I will make is, and I, as bad as I hate to do this, I'll do this. This is, I will not, I will not, I will not vote in favor of the budget. And here's the one reason. Is that we have got a capital improvement plan that is about that thick that we as a council have not done anything with, nor have we been given any kind of idea how to fund it. And I know that in the meeting in November of last year, the first time we looked at the budget stuff, and then in January, and then in February, there were a list of items that department heads brought out. And they were supposedly prioritized. And going back through it, I, I guess I'm a bit concerned that we continue to do the same thing year after year after year. We make a list, but we don't come up with how we're going to fund it. So just, and I, I mean, I hate to be the one that does that, but that is exactly, that's the way I feel about it. Because a budget is not just making pluses and minuses equal. It's looking and it's being proactive about where we're headed. So I'll just throw that out there.
And it is council's choice if you want to make additions or do more on the capital improvement budget. You can always make those changes. Council had indicated not to have a tax increase and managers give you one without a tax increase. So it's up to council if you want to make any other changes.
And, and I will just go back to say, I'm not defending my comment there, mayor. I'm not wanting, that's not what I'm indicating. I'm indicating that we've come up with a list on a capital improvement plan. And we were told either in Janu-, I think it was in January, that we had an idea to be able to fund all of these fifteen issues in the next five years if we did such and such with our paving, where we decided not to do such and such with the paving. So I just, you know, it's grand and we have these grand ideas and grand thoughts. I don't, you know, that was not what I was indicating. I was indicating that we have got to do, we've got to do better, we as a council, we as, to be able to, to really fund what those capital improvement issues are. And I guess I look at, you know, and I'm just, it's the fire department here.
Yep.
Okay, Kenny's back there. And I'm just, I'm not going, I'm not, I'm just using them as an example. You know, we have seen that a fire truck, to get a new fire truck, for instance, it will take three to four years to be able to get it. And if we think we're going to need one in three to four years, then we need to be doing something right now and planning for it. The same thing goes for anything in utilities or public works. So there's just a lot out there that, that we really need to take some time and energy and figure out how we're going to do it. So, um, that's all of that.
Further questions or comments?
I just had a question of, under a couple of, on the budget, under a couple of departments. I saw a significant increase in other professional services and was just curious as to what that covered.
Which departments?
If, well, I've got the PDF budget pulled up. If would page numbers help you any? That's what I made notes, I was the page numbers it was on.
Do you have a budget number or a, uh, account number?
What page you on, David?
Uh, six, well, so I'm going back up now, so I'm, I guess I'm starting at a higher page number, sixty-seven of one oh three. Sixty-one seventy-one twenty, fifty-one, ninety-nine hundred. Yes, that is.
David, say that again, what page?
Sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven.
Professional development.
Well, I think it's other professional.
Other professional services.
And not all departments. So I noticed some departments that decreased significantly, others that increased. And I just was curious as to what that covered and what those variations were.
I can give you specifics at a later date and could give you the details of, you know, anything and any lines that you're mentioning. But generally for our, all the professional services, you're going to see, you know, your, well, our attorneys and engineers, they have their own lines. But what is it called? Professional services like that, that, you know, we, we could hire ourselves, but we're offloading ourselves either via consultants, things of that nature. So that's typically what you see in there, it's separate from other contracted services, you know, such as like our pest control, you know, for maintenance and stuff. That'd be different accounts. That's general terms, kind of what you're going to see in there, but be glad to get back with you on the.
Because, I mean, it covered, you know, several different departments. I could see that in some departments, but was just, just curious.
Yeah, absolutely.
What page again was that specifically?
Sixty-seven.
First one I looked at was sixty-seven.
What's the line item there?
Okay. It was a fifty-one ninety-nine hundred on page sixty-seven.
Oh, okay, I see. About the tenth one down.
Yeah.
Fifty-one.
For ninety-nine hundred. Five-one nine. Nine zero zero.
So thirty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, lineup. No, no. It was, uh,
It went up nineteen, nineteen point two percent, is that the one?
Yeah.
Yep.
I could, I could get that information for you.
Like I said, I just noticed in some departments, there seemed to be a significant jump. Others, it stayed the same, or there was a, even some departments was a decrease. I was just, I was just curious about that when I saw those fluctuations.
That is an account that you're typically going to see fluctuations in. In, in, in fact, from an accounting perspective, you know, you wouldn't actually want to see things there permanently. Otherwise, it's the question of, well, should we just hire a position like that and have it on staff? Because it's kind of like, you know, temporary services or professional health consultants type stuff. The land use plan for Kevin would, would, can go in accounts like that as well. But yeah, we'll get you the specifics, that's what you want to see.
If you need to hold, we can hold the vote. That's totally up to you.
If you've got another minute, if you don't mind, I'm just loading it up now and I can read you the details.
Yeah, we'll take the time, so you can do that.
Can I address the capital improvement plan? I did mention that in my budget message, and it was our intention to present the capital improvement plan to council after the budget was adopted, or simultaneously when the budget was adopted at the next meeting. This capital improvement plan is a five-year plan, as we mentioned in our previous meeting. And it is a plan that does have projects in the budget, this, this budget cycle. And there are four more years left in the capital improvement plan.
So, example, you said it was sixty-one seventy-one twenty?
Yeah.
Okay. What is in there new this year would be water sewers portion of the central line of staffing study that has been mentioned there. So that, that was seventy-five hundred of the total budget. So that's a new one, that'll be a one-year cost that get it in, get it funded this year, completed, should drop off next year.
Further question, Dave? You have another?
Uh, well, there were, I mean, I, I don't know if it's best to go through each one of these now. If I could just email him, and, you know, he would have time to respond to the email, that would be better than.
That would be better.
Okay, I'll just do that.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
And again, back to the capital improvement plan, every year it will be updated. Every year, things will come off as they are presented or paid for or obtained. But every year, something else will go on there. So if there are fifteen on there right now, and we have, I've got it right in front of me in the budget letter, there appear to be five that are going to be touched. Next year, there'll be five or six or eight or ten more put on there. So I think it's just, and I understand that it is a five-year plan.
Further discussion council? Have a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Two, two against, get that. Moving on to number five A, presentation of the transition to the utility billing system.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. I wanted to provide a brief presentation regarding a project that we've been working on for a considerable period of time. You might recall that we have been in the middle of migrating our utility billing system. And the reason I want to discuss this with you tonight is to, one, give you an update on where we are with the project. And two, there are some customer-facing implications with the, with the migration of this that our customers will see in the very near future. So I wanted to present this to you to let you know what's going on, because you may receive some calls from customers asking, what is this about? And I want you to be well informed. So our current utility billing system is Harris North Star. It is hosted by Electric Cities of North Carolina, so they have the software. We actually do not have a direct relationship with our current utility billing system vendor, Harris North Star. It's all negotiated through a third party at, at Electric Cities. Our work order system that our field staff currently uses is called M Care. It's a subset of Harris North Star. So this is what is set to change within the next couple of weeks. To provide you some context on why we are changing, this is not something that we thought would be fun to do. This is something that we were presented with close to two years ago, where Electric Cities came to us in December of twenty twenty-two and informed us that there's been multiple changes in the industry where vendors are no longer third-party hosting software solutions like this. It's a somewhat of an antiquated method of hosting software and billing systems. And that hosting method actually comes with a considerable cost as well. So we're going to realize significant cost savings by doing what we're doing right now. Quite frankly, Electric City said at the time that this was something that they were actually wanting to get out of. So it's not just Almarle that is in this position. There are, I believe, six other cities that are currently going through this right now. And we'll, we'll get into a bit more of the why here in a minute. But, so most vendors are now offering cloud-hosted solutions, which is, which is easier to maintain and manage from an internal standpoint. And basically, the decision that we had was to either go direct to Harris North Star, maintain our current billing system, which would still require an implementation, because we would have to remove Electric Cities from, from the middle there, or we select another vendor entirely. So when we were presented this news, we demonstrated other utility billing systems to see what, what decision would be best for the city of Almarle. In doing so, we discussed with other cities who were also presented with this, I don't want to call it an issue, but presented with this. And we also talked with other cities that had other software vendors that they, that they liked. So we tried to get a nice assessment of different providers and not just make a decision to keep our same provider if it wasn't quite working for us, and it would be a good time to change. And then third, I know that the AMI project has been a topic of discussion for the past two years as well. And we were actually in the middle of implementation when we received this news about changing our billing system. And it's really not a good idea to implement an AMI system while you're also changing a billing system. So it was a chicken or the egg, or a cart before the horse type of decision that was made. And for, you know, to keep things as simple as we, as we possibly could, we went ahead and made the decision to change our billing system first and then go into an AMI migration shortly after. So the new utility billing system, again, based on considerable cost savings, feedback from other cities, the scalability of the new, new technology, the user-friendliness for our staff and our customers, we selected Tyler Technologies ERP Pro Ten. As some of you may know, our financial system is also from Tyler Technologies. We use the UniSystem. So part of this was trying to take an enterprise approach of seamless transition and seamless connection between other systems that we use. We would realize approximately a hundred thousand dollars per year in cost savings by making this transition. The, the solution that we're going to is going to cost roughly sixty thousand dollars a year to host locally, whereas we've been paying roughly a hundred sixty thousand dollars per year by having Electric Cities hosted for us. So the ERP Pro Ten package offers similar solutions that Harris North Star does. So we're not losing any capability. The, the system will support a future AMI system. It works with our existing metering equipment, and there's also a built-in mobile service order system. So it's an all-in-one inclusive package, and it also comes with a new payment system as well, which are, I'll get to that here in a second, the part that will actually impact our customers. So some new features that we have at the outset upon migration is, one of them is Tyler Notify. It's a really cool tool where it basically automates communications to our customers. So if, if someone has passed due on their bill, or, you know, they had a card issue or a bank issue and they were on the disconnect list, this would send a notification directly to them based on the information that they provide the city to let them know what's going on. And also when we have power outages or, or water main breaks, we can automate notifications to affected customers that way as well. So it's, it's a really cool solution to increase our communication to our utility customers. And then one new tool that we will realize when we redeploy AMI, which is set in quarter two to quarter three in fiscal year twenty-five, so roughly the January timeframe, there, there's an application and a portal for customers to view usage, manage account services, and arrange payments. So we're trying to keep everything all in one solution where customers can access everything they need to access with the utility all in one place. So coming up to go live, the implementation on this project began in October of twenty twenty-three. There's been a considerable amount of work and planning that has gone into this, this migration. There's a lot of information to transfer over from one system to the new system. And this is not just a utilities project. It is a project that is set, that is helped by information systems and from finance and other departments that have been related to it. We are set to go live in this new billing system on June seventeenth, so that is right around the corner.
You mean to have twenty.
Twenty twenty-three or twenty-four?
I apologize, twenty twenty-four, in a couple of weeks. I'm sorry. So yes, in a couple of weeks, June seventeenth is when we will go live. We will also have a new payment system, which would include the Tyler Payment Portal. We have Pay Menace currently, that's the portal that our customers currently use. That's going to be taken offline. There is going to be a period of time where we have both portals up, because we still have previous bills that have to be paid, where those bills are going to be in Pay Menace. And then we'll have the Tyler Portal when these new bills come out on the seventeenth, that they will go into that portal for. So there is a bit of a transition period, and I'll get to the communication campaign here in a second about how we're going to notify our customers of this. The phone IVR system that we use is also changing, we have a new number for that. We are also going to be getting new card readers as part of the Tyler Payment System. So on to the changes for our customers. The, one thing I want to clarify and be very clear on is charges on bills will be accurate and based on meter readings as per usual. Nothing is changing with our meter reading equipment, our meters, or anything of the sort. The way that we collect meter reads is going into the system the same exact way. It's just going into a new billing system, which is taking that information and transposing it onto a bill. So this is not a question of, are the right charges going to be on the bill, as they always are, they will be. So payments on both new and previous month's bills can be made as normal up until June seventeenth. This flyer is something that we are sending out in the mail to all of our customers. There is a front and a back, the back is on the next page. So basically, every customer, all utility customers will receive this notification in the mail and basically saying, your next utility bill will look different. Starting on June seventeenth, the phone number for the IVR system is going to be this new number. The website in which you will pay your bill is being updated to reflect almarlenc.gov/paybill. It's currently slash bill pay. So again, we'll have both of those portals up and deployed on June seventeenth for customers to use. And some of the features are also outlined on this pamphlet. And of course, if there are any questions, you can call the customer service line, which you can call the main city number, press one. That'll get you in touch with a customer service representative that can answer any questions that, that the customer may have. So this is the backside of the mailer that we are sending out. This is a sample bill. You'll see that this bill looks very similar to our current bill, but there are some changes. So the way that the bill was exported out of Harris was a pre-designed bill that we have had for, for several years. And that, that bill stays with the Harris North Star environment. So changes were necessary. And as council may remember, not too long ago, we actually selected a new utility bill print and mail vendor. That vendor is Doxum. We've been, we've been with Output Services Group, AKA OSG, for a little over a year now. We've made a transition to Doxum to print and mail our bills. We're currently working with them on a bill redesign as well. But this is the bill that is going to be coming out on the go-live date that customers will receive in the mail. And this is also what they'll see if they're an e-bill customer. And I'll get to, there's a slight change with e-bill customers, I'll get to that here in a second. So we want to provide customers an example of what the bill would look like, because I know that having something different all of a sudden can be a cause of concern. We realize that. So we are sending this mailer out, it should go out in the mail come Monday, and customers will, will receive this, hopefully right around the same time that they are receiving their new bill. We wanted to be pointed in the fact that we didn't want to send this communication out too early, so that customers would forget about it. But we also didn't want to send it out too late, where they got a new bill first and then didn't know anything about it. So we're really trying to marry the timeline, so that people, so that it doesn't cause any confusion. So here is the website that has been updated, this is currently out there. You can navigate to almarlenc.gov/paybill, and this is what you will see. If you go to slash bill pay, that will take you to the existing Pay Menace Portal, the way it's always been. So again, those customers that still have previous month balances, they can go on Pay Menace. Pay Menace can also take a one-time payment, even if you receive a Tyler bill. And we are going to be monitoring that portal when payments come through and linking them to the accounts. And we will manually key those into the Tyler system until we make the full transition. That's just an effort to make sure that we don't miss any payments and we don't forget to apply a payment on a customer's account, thus creating further issues. So that's, that's a risk that we, we have thought about and we are mitigating by doing manual entries. So we, we know to do that over the next rolling month. So once June seventeenth goes up, when you go to this, this website, you will see the Tyler Payment Portal. The Tyler Payment Portal will have one-time payments like you can do on Pay Menace. You can also set up an account with your email address, password, set up auto pay, things of that nature. They'll be, the same capabilities that Pay Menace has had, it's just a different portal. So other notable changes include that e-bill customers will receive their e-bill from a different email address, which is this email address here. So the reason that we could not do that from an Almarle NC address is that if we sent it out from an almarlenc.gov email address, it would eventually flag our email server as spam. So we are using the utility billing vendor to send out this email address for e-bill customers. Just to give you an idea, we have approximately eighteen hundred e-bill customers.
How many?
Approximately eighteen hundred. Another notable change is the, are the preceding zeros on the account numbers. When you, if you made a phone payment on IVR, you had to type in the, the first zeros to make it a full ten-digit number. In the new system, we are taking those zeros off, so the account number is, is going to be the same for everyone, just not with those leading zeros. And just to go ahead and answer the question, doing that change does not offer any capability of a customer accidentally paying on another account. The, the numbers are, are designed and engineered in a way that that cannot happen. So just the removal of the zeros will not offer any confusion for the customer. And of course, if they're having trouble where they're putting in the zeros and they're not getting to where they need to go, they can of course call in, and we're happy to help them out with that. And just a note, this will take a few months, and I'll, I'll definitely come back and we'll send out another pointed advertisement. But printed utility bills, since we're going to the new vendor, Doxum, we're working on a new bill redesign to put more information on the bill for the customers viewing. And that will result in another different utility bill. But again, that's a few months down the road, it's not a cause of concern right now. So the communication campaign, what we're doing to inform our customers of this, and that starts tonight by this discussion with you all. And a press release was also issued earlier, that's going out to the newspaper. We are sending that mailer, the front and back sheet to our customers, all utility customers. The website has been updated, as we saw previously, which will have both the portals up, both pre and post June seventeenth. We're also going to use the Tyler Notify tool to mass notify our customers. So again, another point of communication to each utility account. We will be doing social media posts. We will have a segment on the radio station to talk about this change as well. And then as always, we are always available to take phone calls at our customer service counter. We'll also have some printed material at the front counter with a brochure showing these changes for our customers as well. That's all I had for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you for hearing me out.
Just one question. With this going live on June seventeenth, obviously, that'll probably be the last time that they see the current solid, solid waste fees. You know, when the new budget is adopted July first and take effect. You know, I was just wondering, you know, because the customer base is going to start seeing, on this billing cycle on June seventeenth, they're going to see the current rates. And then come July first, they're going to see a new billing system along with increased solid waste fees. So I was just wondering, should we have waited two more weeks and roll all that out at the same time? You know, so it don't confuse the customer base?
So in working with David on this, that we realized that was a, should be a communication method as well with the changes that we have with the solid waste and the city taking on a portion of the, of the work. a portion of the work as well. We are also working on a pointed message out to customers showing the changes in solid waste. The reason that it is difficult for us to pivot and move our go-live date with Tyler is that this has been scheduled for several months, and the resources that we have with Tyler that are able to help us out with this go-live transition, we only have those available for the first two to three weeks of go-live. And the way that we do our cycles as well is that not everyone in the city will receive a bill on the same day. We essentially bill every day for the most part. So our customers will receive the first bills as early as June 17th is when those first bills will go out, when they come out on e-bill at least, and then of course in the mail. So you may have some customers that will see that same solid waste rate until their bill in the July month, if that makes sense, because those rates won't go active until July 1st.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Jay. So regardless of how a customer pays their utility payments, there's going to be some action regardless of the way they pay, whether it's coming to the drive-through window, whether it's automatically draft, there's going to be action required for everyone, is that correct?
I would say that the customers that wouldn't be affected would be cash-paying customers that either drop it off in the drop-off box, or even when they come to City Hall to make an in-person payment. The card reader won't be any different, it'll be a new card reader, but it won't be any different to the customer. The impacted customers will be ones who pay on the portal or by IVR or one of those methods.
Right.
So just to follow up to that, so you've got eighteen hundred who get them now via This really is a wild question. Currently, we're on Harris North Star.
Yes, ma'am.
And have been for so many years. And we're headed to Tyler. Everybody that's on Harris is going to have to go on and manually do whatever they do, whatever they did to get on Harris, they're going to have to go do to get on Tyler. Is that correct?
Mostly.
Well, there's not going to be a marriage, if you will. What we've, for instance, what I've already done with Harris North Star will not automatically pass over to Tyler. I will have to go on and do that one time if I have automatic pay.
Correct.
Okay. So I think that's the message, and I think that's basically what you were asking, Bill. It's the people that get their bills and they go pay them, you know, go there or write a check and mail it, and they're not going to be affected. It's going to be those eighteen hundred, is that residential and commercial?
It's whoever's side of the...
Okay, those eighteen hundred that have got to know that when they get this letter, that if they've got to go on then and do it because Harris North Star is not going to draft anymore, okay? And they won't be paying Tyler unless they've gone on to set it up, is that right?
Correct. So we've exported a report showing all of our auto pay customers.
Good.
So we have, we are planning on sending pointed communications to them as well through our notification tool.
Good.
The other thing that I wanted to mention is, as much as we would love to pull everything from Paymentis and just auto-load it into Tyler, PCI compliance, people's information, it won't translate.
Right.
So we're hoping that we can point messages to those people who will be most affected that are relying on their payments being made automatically.
So I would just offer to you that there may be people. I'm one of them. I just, it just drafts, I never look at it. I probably ought to, but I don't look at it. So those are the folks that when you send that email, because it's coming from somebody outside of the city of Albemarle, that's what gives me a little bit of scare because of all the spam and all that kind of thing. I think we're, we've got to do whatever we can do about going overboard to make sure that when this comes from to whoever it was coming from, it's not coming from the city of Albemarle, it's coming from Tyler in some form or fashion. Right now, our bills come from the city, isn't that correct?
So I believe it's from a Paymentis address, but I believe it says City of Almarl NC.
Okay, in the four or whatever.
Correct.
Will that say, will that say that?
We have the capability of editing the message when you receive it by email. I just wanted to point out the different email address, if people look at it in that type of detail. But we are able to customize what the subject line would be so that that's the first thing that they would see.
If we can do that in bold, whatever we need to do, because that really scares me. You know, there's eighteen hundred folks out there, and you know, there may be four hundred that never look at it, it just pays, and they won't do anything with it. And those are the folks that then are going to get a pass, no, electricity, I mean, you know, I'm afraid that's going to happen, because if it happens to a few, we'll hear about it. I'm glad we're doing this, I think it's great, particularly because of the money savings. Secondly, we had to do it since Harris was leaving.
Right.
So...
And real quick to alleviate some of that with the e-bill, we've actually set all of our e-bill customers to receive a printed bill as well, just in case there were any issues at the outset with the email. We do plan, once we make sure that everything is working as it should, we will be able to switch that back to where they just received an e-bill. But we wanted to be sure that everyone receives a notice, especially during the transition period.
So as I understand, let me reiterate that. Even if I get an e-bill, e-bill, bill, an email bill, I will be getting a paper when this, that first time, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, that will, that's great.
Two questions. Number one, can I mail in my check? Am I going to mail it to a different place? And number two, is the grace period still the same?
Yes, sir. Nothing has changed with the, where you send, where you mail your bill, it's still the PO Box 190, and the customer service policy is still the very same. Now, just, you brought up a good point. During this transition period, we do realize that there is going to be some confusion to customers, and we're going to pay special attention to how payments are coming in, or rather, not coming in. And it's, it is our goal and purpose to not disconnect customers. We are not going to do that at the outset. We're going to pay very special attention to how everything is transacting and coming in, and the final resort before any of that is to make contact with the customer to make sure that they realize this change has taken place before we take that measure.
So...
Come up, come up.
Come up front, please.
And you might should tell everybody who you are so they'll know what...
This is Jennifer, she's the, she's been the project manager for the Tyler migration.
Go to the microphone, go to the microphone.
Just a couple of things, just so everybody's really clear that's watching or may have questions. Bank draft customers are completely different than credit card draft customers. Bank draft customers, you've signed up with your checking account and routing number, those are not going to be interrupted. Customers do not need to do anything with those accounts. And for customers that are set up on credit card draft, we do have a targeted list, and the email notification is going to be sent from a city email address, letting them know you're going to need to do this, this, and this by June 17th.
Good.
Okay. So while you're up there, may I ask, we're fourteen days away from this implementation. I like the fact that you're going to have social media posts or radio segment, et cetera. When is that going to start?
The social media posts will start before the end of this week and into next week. We're doing a few messages. I'll have to follow up with David and see what he has scheduled up with the radio. I'm not sure of the exact date on that.
I think as early as we can get this thing out there and get, especially because we have a lot of folks who, you know, are going to need to make some adjustments to their account, we need to get this thing out there quick.
Further questions, comment? Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We're now going to move to unannounced delegations. Each person will be allowed three minutes. I will start with Boyd Stanley, 500 South Cannon Boulevard, Kannapolis.
Good evening, Mayor Michael, members of council. Mr. Rhodes, Boyd Stanley, 500 South Cannon Boulevard, Kannapolis, North Carolina. Continuing my list regarding the upcoming City Lake Special Environments Overlay District, and I'm going to jump right in because we're limited on time here. The next item on the comment list was text amendments are usually used in cases where illegal zoning has been applied. The current UDO does not have a provision titled Special Environments Overlay District. The UDO, Section 92.090 Use Districts references two overlay districts, one being the Northeast Corridor Overlay District and the Albemarle Local Historic District. The UDO is a legal document that cannot be altered, added to, or framed for political favor at the behest of a city council. Any text changes to an established document requires due process, disclosure, hearing, comments, debate, and impact studies, environmental impact studies. Zoning regulations do not permit a government to arbitrarily lay a map delineating a proposed future infringement across the lands of adjacent owners without due process. A map delineating a proposed infringement area is on par with a preliminary declaration of an impeding eminent domain action. The city of Albemarle has no designation for the proposed overlay district and has not demonstrated a need beneficial to the public interest to request an overlay district. The city of Albemarle has not performed financial impact studies, environmental impact studies, or conventional land rights studies. The city of Albemarle has not disclosed the impact to the adjoining property, the affected adjoining property owners. Imminent domain action is a tool or law used to force the will of the majority to comply with the will of a few, to exert their desire for communal lands and rights at substantial cost to the taxpayer. To initiate a legal imminent domain action, there are many steps of due process to perfect the tool designed for confiscation of property rights and lands. Long Lake represents a potential environmental biological hazard, a physical encroachment of contaminated water, encroachment of sovereign land rights by virtue of the Albemarle City, additional burden of taxes on city residents due to necessary policing, possible lifeguards, liability insurance, dam maintenance, biology maintenance, and potential foodborne poisons from contaminated fish. City Council, it is evident by the way in which this proposed text amendment has been manufactured, emerged, emerged and concealed, it reeks with defects of legal precedent, legal norms, its potential imminent domain being disguised, settled zoning annihilation, property value annihilation promoting government control, and it's obvious that this is being utilized to develop for the government a control area around its real estate assets at the expense of city and county taxpayers. City Council, the proposed text amendment, if implemented, will be challenged at every level. Perhaps the city council would consider the provisions of settled norms set out in its existing subdivision rules. Thank you.
Stanley, there will be a public hearing on the 17th, you're welcome to come back then.
Thank you, Mayor Michael. Appreciate it.
I just wanted to say, on our street, we got a lot of problem with three-wheelers and four-wheelers. It's like right in the front of my house, they just spinning around and around and around in circles, the gravel is all over my yard, or my walkway, I could barely walk on it. And this is happening regularly. It's not just every now and then, they're regularly doing this, riding up and down the street. It's just horrible over there. You know, you can't even hardly get out your driveway. At one moment, it was so much dust and dirt and I guess smoke from the three-wheelers and the four-wheelers, couldn't even see for a while. I mean, it covers my car, be covered with dirt and hitting gravel and not only the fact that people come down there so fast through there and they knew it's a dead end, turns around right there, actually backed into my car and hit and run, I mean, that was reported to the police. I mean, all this stuff's happening because nobody is patrolling over there to see what's going on. And I mean, this neighborhood is just getting out of control. We've been living over there about fifty years, and it's never been like this. I mean, it's horrible over there. I mean, we need some reinforcement from police department or somebody to come by and see what's going on in our neighborhood every once in a while. We got so many new people that's moved in and so much traffic all the time, and you can't even hardly, you come down the street, I mean, you got to stop yourself, you can't wait for them to stop at the stop sign because of the way they travel through there. So it's just, it's just terrible through there.
Ms. Simons, what was your address again?
504 Coggins Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simons.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Ingram, and I live at 413 Coggins Avenue here in Albemarle. And I have been there at that address for about fifty years, and I have never seen this street as bad as it is now. If you come to my house right now, it looks like a dump truck full of gravel has been poured in my driveway and across the street at my neighbor's house. Every other day, those guys up the street, up the street, they are, they're on these four-wheelers, these dirt bikes, and it's kicking up dust, gravel, at least two or three times a week. And we have to constantly be washing our cars, we have to sweep gravel, dirt, every other day. It's so, it's gotten so bad that it has gotten so bad, someone was shooting at each other a few weeks ago, and my daughter and I had just got out of the car and just got in the house, and time we got in there, somebody started shooting, and it hit her car in her trunk. And we got in the house just in time, or we would have probably got hit because the bullet is still in the trunk of her car. And we got out of the car just in time, and like I said, the bullet is still in the trunk of her car. And it would really, really, really be good if we could get some gravel, where's gravel at, get the road paved, we need cameras on the poles so it can see in all directions. And if they could get those dirt bikes and those four-wheelers off the street, be banned it from the streets, and if they're caught riding, fine them. And all, we call this house endangerment to us because we're scared to go out of our house in a time of the day, the night, they're always doing something. And there's a lot of drug activity going on, and it haven't even got hot yet. And whenever it gets hot, it's going to be some terrible activity going on. And if anyone want to see the gravel, they're welcome to come to my house because I left it there. I said, don't mess with it, just leave it there, you can go there and see it. Like I said, I'm on 413 Coggins Avenue. And I do have some pictures. I took some pictures of where they did wheelies, the spins, all of a sudden. And so the police, like we said, the police do come, but they just like ride through, and everybody's already gone. And so they don't see the activity when it's going on. And so we just need help on Coggins Avenue, bad.
Do you know where they're from, where they're coming from?
Yes.
You know which house? I don't, you don't need to tell me now, I just need to tell them.
They're directly across the street from us. I know one is 503 Coggins, and then the other one, I can't tell you the other one, but they're right beside each other.
But these are folks that live on Coggins Avenue that are up and down from the dead end?
Yes, yes, they are.
On the south side coming up to the north side?
Yes, yes. And like I said, I do have pictures, if anybody wants to see.
Mind passing it?
That's the front of my house.
They're coming out there and actually doing donuts.
Thank you.
Does that have a phone? Oh, no, yours good. I just touched it, made sure it came back on there.
Ma'am, can I ask, when you, whenever you and your daughter were going back in the house and the bullets were flying and hit her trunk, did you actually make a report with the police department?
And unfortunately, this is only one of many occasions of that nature, you know. These residents on Coggins, they cried for help numerous times over the last two to three years, you know. I look out in the audience and see Mr. and Mrs. Edwards, Ms. Simon, and they've even attended some meetings that we've had behind, I guess, what I would say, closed doors with law enforcement officials to address some of their concerns.
They have met, they've met behind closed doors?
Yes, we have. You know, I think we, we got to, we got to give them some help, you know.
Thank you. It's the first time I've heard about it.
Ms. Simons, Ms. Ingram, we will follow up on that, thank you very much.
And unfortunately, this is a, this is kind of a situation that's going all across the country. across the country. I know a couple of weeks ago in Charlotte, they had some situations where cars get out in the middle of intersections and start doing burnouts, and folks are scared, you know. And, this was, this wasn't in a residential in Charlotte, it was right on the main thoroughfare in downtown, right beside the NASCAR Hall of Fame. So, you know, I hope the, the police, the, the police department can step up some patrols and hopefully arrest these people and charge them as, you know, with all that they can to try to stop some of this stuff.
Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, 8A, consider road closures for the annual dinner on Main event. This is on September the twenty-first. 8B, Resolution 2415, adopting the let-through rates for fiscal year 2425. 8C, Resolution 2416, adopting water and sewer rates for fiscal year 2425. And, 8D, Resolution 2417, adopting water and sewer tap fee and water meter fees for fiscal year 2425.
But, approve.
Motion of the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble. Approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by who, maybe? Councilmember Aldrich. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Um, coming around the table, uh, I'll start, we were not able to attend tonight because of a conflict with timing, but I want to say, congratulations to the inductees of the Sports Hall of Fame, Darryl Malden, Bill Malden, Francis Watson, and the late Jack Gaster. Hate we cannot attend this year. I also want to say thank you to the Parks, uh, team. Their maintenance staff had done a good job on Montgomery Park. They went over there and, uh, done a lot of things, but one of the things they did do that we had asked for were they painted the bathrooms, cleaned up the bathrooms, and they're gonna get some new doors to go on the bathrooms. Uh, that, that will help that out considerably. Uh, also at Rock Creek, if Councilmember remember, we had some ladies come to us about the handicap parking, uh, between the parks and rec and public works. Gravel has been put down there where the handicap parking was, so people can get into that now. And, lastly, I want to say thank you and congratulations to the Friends of the Waddell Center and Dexter. That was an excellent event Saturday.
Right.
Very well attended, and I guess the most participants that I can ever remember.
It was, it was our largest turnout.
Coming around the table, Mr. Rhodes.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Townsend.
Uh, no other issues other than just say thanks to everybody that came out and supported, um, the grill-off competition this past weekend. It was a great success. Appreciate you.
Mr. Bramble.
If you haven't seen Courthouse Plaza, you need to come down, look at downtown and see it.
Mr. Aldrich.
Yes, sir. No comment.
Ms. Hall.
So, Dexter, I'm sorry I didn't get there. I was working on another, uh, benefit fundraiser that day, so sorry I couldn't be there. Um, at a Wampus Cats game last week, I met, um, the assistant coach, I've got my notes here, so I'd make sure I got it correct, of the Albemarle Dixie Youth Baseball, okay? And, he was saying that we have a, and again, I may have this wrong, but I think I've got it right written in my notes. Our Albemarle All-Star, eight-year-old All-Stars are in the regional tournament. And, that regional tournament starts on this Friday at Richfield Park. And, there'll be about, there'll be teams, as I understand, at about eight teams from about six different counties. And, our boys will be starting off the play at five o'clock on Friday night, uh, no, strike that, five o'clock on Saturday night, the eighth at Richfield. But, these are little guys from Albemarle. And, um, one of the guys, one of the little guys, the baseball players was there at the Wampus Cats game, and he was so pumped to be watching Wampus Cats team, knowing that he was gonna be getting to play in a tournament himself the next week. So, I would just offer that to the community. It's another thing, or another opportunity to go support some young folks in their, um, in their activities. And, I also would echo the, sorry, we could not be at the Hall of Fame because of scheduling issues, but congratulations to those folks and to their families. Thank you.
Mr. Quinlan.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dry.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hunt.
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion that would go into closed session, present the North Carolina General Statute 143, 318A, 3 and 6, to consult with attorney and personnel.
I know.
Motion by Councilmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Member Dry, second by Councilmember Hunt. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Coming out of closed session, we have nothing to announce. I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn until Monday, June the seventeenth at 5:30 p.m. Remember, 5:30.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldrich.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.